We have four members present on the panel. We have one, ten members. I'm Bertie. And then we have Betty. And then Paul. And then Eric. And then John. And then Chris. And then we have... We have one, ten members. I'm Bertie. And then we have Betty. And then Paul. And then Eric. And then John. And then Chris. And then we have... We have one, ten members. I'm Bertie. And then we have Betty. And then Paul. And then Eric. And then John. And then Chris. And then we have... We have one, ten members. I'm Bertie. And then we have Betty. And then Paul. And then Eric. And then John. And then Chris. And then we have... We have one, ten members. I'm Bertie. And then we have Betty. And then Paul. And then Eric. And then John. And then Chris. And then we have... We have one, ten members. I'm Bertie. And then we have Betty. And then Paul. And then Eric. And then John. And then Chris. And then we have... We have one, ten members. I'm Bertie. And then we have Betty. And then Paul. And then Eric. And then John. And then Chris. And then we have... We have one, ten members. I'm Bertie. And then we have Betty. And then Paul. And then Eric. And then John. And then Chris. And then we have... We have one, ten members. I'm Bertie. And then we have Betty. And then Paul. And then Eric. And then John. And then Chris. And then we have... We have one, ten members. I'm Bertie. And then we have Betty. And then Paul. And then Eric. And then John. And then Chris. And then we have... We have one, ten members. I'm Bertie. And then we have Betty. And then Paul. And then Eric. And then John. And then Chris. And then we have... We have one, ten members. I'm Bertie. And then we have Betty. And then Paul. And then Eric. And then John. And then Chris. And then we have... We have one, ten members. I'm Bertie. And then we have Betty. And then Paul. And then Eric. And then John. And then Chris. And then we have... We have one, ten members. I'm Bertie. And then we have Betty. And then Paul. And then Eric. And then John. And then Chris. And then we have... We have one, ten members. I'm Bertie. And then we have Betty. And then Paul. And then Eric. And then John. And then Chris. And then we have... We have one, ten members. I'm Bertie. And then we have Betty. And then Paul. And then Eric. Good morning, everybody. And welcome to the City Council meeting for the city of Los Angeles. Today is Friday, July 13th. No superstitions here in this building. It's about 10:15, and we're still just shy of a quorum. But part of our customary practice here is to utilize Fridays for special presentations and recognitions. We have a number of presentations this morning. The chair recognizes Ms. Calantra for her presentation.
Good morning. Step this way. Thank you, Mr. President. I actually do have several presentations this morning. I'd like to start by recognizing my friend Ralph Metzer. We were just speculating on how long it's been that we've known each other, and I'm not going to tell you, although you're going to figure it out in a minute. Ralph is an architect. When I first met him, he was a mere architecture student. And we were neighbors and partners in an effort, a successful effort, to force the city of Santa Monica's redevelopment project near the beach to include affordable housing, which unfortunately has now, has been there so long that the covenants on it are almost going to run out. But Ralph started out as a community activist with an interest in design, and he decided to try to use his design skills in a way that would benefit the community. And the reason I've asked him to come in here and be recognized by the city of Los Angeles is that he's been pretty successful at it. After being part of the little gang in which we all got our start, learning how the coastal commission process works and how the development works, Ralph finished the process of becoming an architect and went on to work in a number of different firms as he tried to figure out the best way to do things. And now he's got, basically got his own practice. He served for a while on the Santa Monica City's Architectural Review Board and the Santa Monica City Planning Commission. He stayed in Santa Monica when I moved on to Los Angeles. But he's done a lot for the city of Los Angeles as well. And I particularly am grateful for the work that he did in creating the Los Dorados and Learning Center for the Neighborhood Youth Association in Venice, a venerable organization in its own right and one which needed new facilities and needed facilities that would be designed in a way that was affordable to the organization but also was going to provide the kind of environment that the young people in the Neighborhood Youth Association could most benefit from. He also worked on rehabilitating 16 units for the Friends Research Institute and 25 units for Project New Hope. And he has done a number of other informal advisory projects with people, just helping people in the affordable housing area, understand how you can do affordable housing with good architecture. And architecture can in fact be not a, just a luxury for rich people, but a really integral part of our lives. And besides that, he's a nice guy. And he's my friend. And some days, you know, you can never have too many friends. So Ralph, it really is, I know we've talked about this for a long time. You were honored by the city of Santa Monica and the Ocean Park Community Center. It must be at least a year ago, two years ago, I forget. It's getting to be a while. And we're a little behind, but I do want to offer you this resolution commending you and thanking you for the work that you've done in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Would you like to introduce your friends and family here?
Sure. Thank you for this honor. It's a privilege to be here and receive this. And it's always a privilege to work in projects in Los Angeles with nonprofit groups providing housing, youth centers, and facilities that make Los Angeles a better community. With me today, I have my friend Linda Gross and her daughter Sarah, and my associate of many years, Doug Meyer, who, without him, none of these projects would have come to fruition.
Should have given him one, too. There you go. Thank you. Nice to see you. Of course, I'm not going to tell you the really good stories about Ralph's and my long association. For my next presentation, I was hoping to be joined by councilmembers Burnson and Wax, but I don't see either one of them. So I'm going to do this anyway, and they can make their speeches later. So I need now to ask Greg Scott from the Bureau of Street Services to come forward. Greg is, for another few days, the director of the Bureau of Street Services. He's going to be retiring on Monday. Look at him smile. It hurts to see people smile as they're leaving. Greg and his family live in Granada Hills in Mr. Burnson's district, and he's been reporting all this time to the Public Works Committee, which, as you know, is chaired by Mr. Wax, so they were hoping to join me as well. Greg started work in the street services in 1969, following his father's footsteps. His father Bertram retired after 32 years of service. How long have you been here? 69, 32. Have we got any little Scots coming along?
I have my brother here, who's been here 15.
Okay, we're working on it. He's not so little, though.
No.
All right. He was, Greg has been very helpful to all of us in our districts. He gets the complaints, and he not only gets the complaints, he fixes the streets, for which we are profoundly grateful, and so are the constituents. He was very helpful in some of the innovations that have occurred in street services. One of them was changing its name from Street Repair to Street Services, with the hope that that would remind everybody in the department, in the bureau, that the goal of the bureau is in fact service to the city. And that was, that was, I think, though it's symbolic, I think it's an important symbol of what we're really talking about here. This was part of Greg's program to reorient the department so that we would, we would all be focused on service, safety, quality, productivity, but basically making sure that the work is getting done, getting done, when it needs to be done. He helped us institute the asphalt recycling program, near and dear to my heart. In case you ever wondered what they do with the old stuff when they chop it up or when it's been chopped up and you call his bureau, they recycle it. He helped implement the falling weight deflectometer. You like, got that? Spelling test will be in about 10 minutes. Measures the quality of the asphalt on the street and helps to rate the streets so that they can determine which streets are most in need of resurfacing. There's also a nuclear density gauge and a superpave technology, and this has received national recognition, putting LA in the forefront of public works technology. And so when all those reporters try to, and your friends and relatives in other parts of the country try to tell you, "We're no good," just tell them, "We've gotten recognized for a whole bunch of things, including our public works technology." Greg also reorganized the contract truck program, increasing the paving of city streets from 100 to 275 miles per year. Why are you leaving? You might be tired. He also created the special projects and engineering divisions, which enhance the bureau's ability to move from design to construction in less time and at less cost, both of which is a further indication of service to the community. But Greg, after 32 years, has decided enough is enough already, and he is retiring on Monday. So it is with some regret, but also I consider it an honor, that I present to you, Greg, a commendation resolution from all of us, commending your years of service, thanking you for your years of service, and wishing you a wonderful, happy, fun, relaxed, healthy retirement.
Thank you very, very much.
And now, as with all people who are retiring and therefore cannot be punished, you get to say all the things you've waited 32 years to be able to say to us.
Before we...
As long as they're brief.
Before Mr. Scott speaks, a couple of members do wish to make a few comments. Chair recognizes Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Ruth noted, Greg is smiling today, but the truth is, Greg smiles like that every day. When the name of the bureau was changed from Street Maintenance to Street Services, Greg epitomized what that was all about. From the top down, there was an esprit, there was real commitment, there was a really high morale in your bureau. And you were not only getting more money to do more work, you delivered. You delivered with more work, and we saw more streets being paid. We saw the city, for the first time, start dealing with our sidewalk repair. And the miles of sidewalks, the miles of streets that were repaired are visible in the city. The community respects that, and the community also respects the people who are doing the work. This was a really can-do effort by your bureau. You led it, but from the top down, your workers, I saw them many, many times out in the street, working together as teams, participating, working with the community, and it's just been a real pleasure to see that effort, that initiative, and know that it came from your leadership. It is really going to be very, very hard to fill those shoes, but I do know that you've got great workers behind you who've done it, and you're going to be very, very much missed. And I just want to congratulate you and thank you for rising to the occasion. We have some departments which get more money in the budget, but they don't quite take that money and use it effectively. You used every dollar we gave you effectively. We saw the result on the street, in the change, getting those street stumps, tree trump stumps picked up, and all sorts of things, and our streets look better for it. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Reyes.
This is only a few weeks I've been here as a councilman, but I've been a staff person for close to eight, nine years, and working in the trenches with fellow staff members. I just want to acknowledge all your work, the work from your bureau, from Pico Union to Highland Park. You've been there for us, and I just want to truly thank you and the leadership you've provided for your bureau. Thank you so much.
Greg, I also want to take a moment just to thank you and to commend you for all your work. You know, somebody in the position that you've been in could easily be a good manager, a good administrator, and do a fine job. But in the conversations you and I have had and the work that we've done together, whether it's looking at maps in my office or our trips to Sacramento to lobby for some of that funding, I know you've been a champion for the department, for the specific things you've cared about, to go into the next level of understanding the significance of improving our asphalt recycling initiatives and the practices within the department. Your work hand-in-hand with the employee groups within the bureau, you did a great job, and we're going to miss you. And when people mention the change of the name from Bureau of Street Management to, and other versions of that, to Bureau of Street Services, I think you just wanted to go around and say you were the boss. It's your turn at the microphone, Greg.
Just a couple of words, pardon me, to say thank you to all of you. I've learned a lot from you, City Council, from all of you, of different ways of looking at community concerns, different ways of evaluating, and I think it's made me a better manager and hopefully in some little way helped you deliver service to our customers, the citizens of Los Angeles. So I just want to say thank you for 32 wonderful years. I've enjoyed working with all of you so much. I'll always remember you. I'll always cherish you. This is the greatest city in the United States, maybe the world, and I think you're going to take it to the next level with the people that are still here, because this bureau is here for you. Its employees are here for you. I'd say the unions and the employees and the management are going to work together and to help you make this city the very best in the world. Thank you for a wonderful 32 years.
Ms. Calantra, before your next presentation, I've just spotted a familiar face here in City Hall, and I want to recognize a special guest, Mr. Mike Fuer, councilmember emeritus. Thank you for being with us.
He's not here at random. We have a plan. Thank you, Mr. President. I have two more people I want to recognize this morning, who are the Environmentalists of the Year, selected by the Coalition on the Environment and Jewish Life of Southern California. And we're joined here today by Lee Wallach, who is the head honcho from the Coalition. I know you will want to join me in making these presentations. I'm going to, this is, this is an organization, well, I'm going to let Lee tell you about it, but basically this is an organization that links the precepts of Jewish religious life with the need to take care of the earth. And in keeping with that, each year they acknowledge two Jewish environmentalists. And we like to do the same thing here at the council. We let you do the screening and picking, and then we give them certificates. So I'm going to ask Mr. Wallach to say just a few words about the purpose of the Coalition, and then we'll do the presentations one at a time.
Thank you. The Coalition on the Environment and Jewish Life has been around for a number of years. We have been lucky enough to do some incredible work on environmental issues, bringing together not only the Jewish faith community, but the interfaith community to the environmental table. And that is one incredible partnership. It has been incredibly effective. You will continue to hear more about the work we are doing, and hopefully you'll all continue to be partners with the faith community, with Coalition on Environment and Jewish Life, and more importantly, with the folks we honor today, because it really is the amazing work that happens day after day in organizations such as the two that we're about to hear about. The work that goes on there is nothing less than amazing. It is truly God's work, and we are here to, as far as we're concerned, take care of this environment, not for us right now, but also for our children. This is God's creation. This is a moral obligation to do so. And again, we enjoy this partnership with the council, so thank you.
Now, if you'll just step to the side here so you can join me in this, we're going to do two presentations. First, we're going to recognize Gail Ruderman-Fuer, and I'd like to ask my former colleague, Michael, to come and join me as part of this presentation. You get rid of one Fuer, you get another Fuer. There are no Fuer-Fuers. I'm sorry, I can't help it. You can see what retirement is doing to me here. Gail is, I think, known to most of us as the, are you the senior attorney at NRDC? You are, aren't you? Yes. As, as one of the most prominent local environmental attorneys. She is the, has been at the Natural Resources Defense Council since 1993, after working in the environmental section of the California Attorney General's office. And she specializes in air and water quality issues, and she sues us. But she has not been seen, as she reminded me, she has not been seen in the city council chambers for about six years.
Almost exactly six.
Almost exactly six years, because, as you know, both of the Fuers are very careful to make sure that there is no problems with conflicts, and so they stayed out of each other's way in this chamber until this historic moment. Gail heads the NRDC Air Quality Program, and in 1999, she brought to trial a federal clean air lawsuit against the Clean Air Act lawsuit against the South Coast Air Quality Management District. Mr. Burnson's not here yet, right? This was a two-year legal battle, which basically requires AQMD to get rid of smog by 2010. Now, we're all holding our breath until 2010, but we are certainly grateful for any efforts that will accelerate that process. She also spearheaded the Dump Dirty Diesel campaign, which worked. The AQMD now requires public fleets to purchase only non-diesel alternative fuel trucks and buses, and supermarket chains are now required to purchase 175 alternative fuel heavy-duty trucks and provide warnings of exhaust hazards to residents around distribution centers. So we are making progress, and the reason we are making progress is that Gail Ruderman-Fuer is on the job. So it is my very great pleasure to, now maybe I'll let you say something, Michael, just in case you wish to, and make sure I've got the right one here. Before, before I actually hand you this, Gail, with congratulations and thanks for your work, I think we ought to let your spouse, who's here as your spouse today, but who is our former colleague, get his last licks in here. Michael.
Thank you, Ruth. It is an extraordinary thing to be back on this side of the rope here, I have to say. I wanted to first acknowledge our president, Mr. Padilla. Thank you very much for the recognition earlier. I appreciate it a lot. We're here for Gail, and I have to say, we're here for the one member of our family who always gets positive press, which is a good thing, too. The one thing that Ruth didn't mention, the California Bar has a magazine, which every year identifies the 20 lawyers in the state of California who made the biggest difference. And last year, Gail was one of the top 20 lawyers in the state of California for the California Lawyer Magazine, which is a really exceptional honor. You know, whether it be cleaning up Santa Monica Bay, cleaning up our air, promoting environmental justice in our city, Gail is always at the forefront, and now it's time for Gail to be at the forefront here. She's a remarkable person, a wonderful spouse, a fabulous parent, and for today's purposes, one of the best environmental lawyers in the nation.
She is that most of the time. So, Gail, with my congratulations and thanks for all your hard work, here you go.
Thank you. That's good. I would like to see your government is here to serve.
Thank you. It is, has literally been six years since I've been here, because I have been staying away, so there was not a conflict in our family. So I may be coming back, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you. And this council has been a leader on many environmental issues, including on the diesel exhaust issue, where this council took a position supporting these rules that would start cleaning up the fleet in Los Angeles and the surrounding regions, and really will make a difference in our pollution. So thank you very much for this award. It's very special to me, and I appreciate all the work that Kojal does as well, which plays a really important role, and Lee Wallach, who's here, plays an important role on environmental issues. So thank you very much, and thank you to my amazing husband, who has been so supportive. His life has, his life has been very complicated, obviously, but mine wreaks great havoc on our lives as well, and he's enormously supportive and patient with all the work I do on environmental issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stick around. Now, for our next presentation, I want to invite the guy who trained him, my chief of staff, Adi Lieberman, to join me in this presentation, as we recognize Dr. Mark Gold, who is the executive director at Heal the Bay. He started, he's been the executive director since 1994. Adi was his predecessor, as I'm sure many of you know, and while Adi was there, Mark was the Issues and Programs Director from, that can't be 1998 to 94, 88 to 94. Does that sound right? See, we should always proofread. Mark is also familiar to all of us. He's been, he's everywhere, basically. You didn't know that Santa Monica Bay was everywhere, but it is, and, and the things that impact Santa Monica Bay come from everywhere, and so Mark has been everywhere. He was the principal negotiator for Heal the Bay on the LA County, the LA City and County stormwater permits. He helped author a whole bunch of state legislation. He's chaired statewide workshops on contaminated sediments, on urban stormwater best management practices. He's a visiting professor, I'm reading this because I know the guy pretty well, but I don't keep his resume in my head. Visiting professor at UCLA School of Public Health in 97 and 98 concerning environmental regulatory acts and agencies. And he's been the principal investigator and author for several groundbreaking studies of the Santa Monica Bay marine environment and the Beach Report Card. So, Mark, maybe, maybe I should let Adi say something first. Did you want to say anything?
No.
Adi is a good politician. Mark, it is my pleasure to present you with this, from the, this plaque from the city, to you as the other 2001 Jewish Environmentalist of the Year, in recognition of your 13 years of work and your continuing energy.
Thank you very much, the council, to Councilmember Galanter and to Kojal. It's obviously a great honor for me, also to be honored at the same time as Gail, who I've been fortunate enough to work with quite a bit over the years, although she's more on air nowadays, so I miss that. And it's, it's wonderful to get this honor, because there's really nothing more rewarding than working on improving our local quality of life, not only for people, but for marine life. And I get to work with, obviously very closely with people here at the city, the council, staff and public works at all. And also, I have a great organization, Heal the Bay, with wonderful volunteers and staff, and we're always here to help you and the city try to make this a better place for all of us. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Do you want this to go over? One, one last word, Mr. President. We are joined here by a number of other members of the Coalition on Environment and Jewish Life, and I've asked Lee to introduce them before we leave.
Yes, you've all seen me on a number of issues. This is one hat I wear, one I'm passionate about, but one I could not do alone as well. My Kojal fellow board members happen to include our own Adi Lieberman from here, Carol Felixson, Saran Kirschbaum. Please stand. They are just incredible members of the city of Los Angeles, so I ask us all to thank them as well.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. The chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco for a presentation.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues. I want to call up a couple of distinguished city servants here, Sergeant Sam Baron, or Barron. Barron. Sergeant Richard Rinker, and Police Officer Two, plus Two, William Rue, or Bill Rue. Sergeant Sam Barron has served the city of Los Angeles for 27 years, starting out with the Hollenbach Division, Communications Division, Rampart Division, 77th Street Division, Wilshire Division, and Central Traffic Division. During these 27 years, he developed an outstanding record of service, accumulating 99 commendations in his personnel file, including Central Traffic Division's Supervisor of the Year for the year 2000. He was a part of developing and working with the Cops for Tots Car Show. He is on his off time, been very active with his local Alex Lodge to help build a better community through his volunteer work. He is scheduled to retire, or tomorrow. Tomorrow's his last day. And he will be retiring to the community of Diamond Bar. So on behalf of the City Council of Los Angeles, we wanted to commend you for working so hard for us here in the city of Los Angeles, and basically wish you a relaxed, fruitful retirement and quality time with your family, Sergeant Barron. Thank you so much. I'm going to do all three of you, and then you can each have an opportunity to say, you don't want to say anything?
Before we do that, Councilmember Zein, we should make a few comments. Mr. Zein.
Before they speak, yeah. Let me do all three, and then you can—
Okay, we'll wait.
Also want to recognize Sergeant Rinker, Richard Rinker, who's given his time and duty to the city of Los Angeles for 30 years. He was appointed on June 29, 1971, working with the Wilshire Division, Communications Division, Central Traffic Division, and Newton Division. He's developed an outstanding record of exemplary service as a police officer and supervisor, accumulating 69 commendations in his personnel file. Sergeant Rinker has also been a court-qualified expert in the field of accident reconstruction for 20 years, and has represented the city of Los Angeles Police Department at accident reconstruction seminars throughout the United States. He is a life member and former officer of the Society of Accidents Reconstructionists. So on behalf, also, are you guys neighbors? You guys live in, you are, huh? He will also be retiring to the community of Diamond Bar. And on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, Sergeant Rinker, for your 30 years of service and commitment to the people of the city of Los Angeles, I want to give you this resolution and also wish you a restful and fruitful retirement. Thank you so much, Sergeant Rinker, for working for us. I have Police Officer William Bill Rue, who also is giving us 30 years of service to the citizens of the city of Los Angeles, working at Central Division, Southwest Division, West Traffic Division, South Traffic Division, and Central Traffic Division. He's also had an outstanding record of exemplary service, accumulating 162 commendations in his personnel file, including Central Traffic Division Officer of the Year for 1995. Officer Rue has become a treasurer for, become the treasurer for the charitable group or the charitable event, the Cops for Tots Car Show, which generates a great amount of funding for his outstanding cause. The car show was established to enable the Central Traffic Division to work with the community in an effort to raise funds and raise public awareness of bone marrow transplants. Through his efforts and the other individuals, other officers who participated in this, they have been able to raise a total of $86,000 for critically ill children. On behalf of the city of Los Angeles, Officer Rue, I want to thank you and present you with this resolution for giving us 30 years of your time and dedication to the citizens of Los Angeles. Thank you, Officer Rue. And then now, hold on a second for one of your former colleagues, one of my current colleagues. I think he was a traffic officer for a little while, Sergeant Dennis Zein.
Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. President and colleagues, 87 years of experience is what you see retiring before you this morning. 87 years of combined service to the people of Los Angeles by these fine, dedicated members of the Los Angeles Police Department. And I just want to offer my personal congratulations to each and every one of you. I know the fine motor officer and all the fine work you did. I know the fine work that the traffic people do. I know the fine work that Sam has done, and the people of Los Angeles have greatly benefited from that. But when you compile those years of experience, of dedication, it's incredible. 87 years we see standing before us, and hopefully there'll be people to follow in your footsteps and fill those big shoes, fill that big Kawasaki motorcycle as they travel down, making the streets of Los Angeles safe. But I offer congratulations to all of you, and God bless and happy retirement.
I just want to thank the council and the people of Los Angeles for a very good, interesting, and very exciting 27 years. Thank you.
Just a thank you, it's been an interesting 31 years with the city of Los Angeles, and it's going to be, hopefully, another interesting 30 years without the city of LA.
I too want to thank you all for allowing me to do what I've done. It's been a wonderful 30 years, and without my wife and my daughter supporting me, I couldn't have done it. Thank you.
Mr. President, as always, we know that many of our city employees dedicate their lives and time for the citizens of Los Angeles. I do want the council to recognize and applaud and thank the family members who give up their time by sharing their significant others and loved ones with the city of Los Angeles. I just want to tell you, thank you for sharing your husbands and your spouses and your family. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Their speeches were short and sweet. I wonder what happened to Mr. Zein by the time he got to the council. The chair recognizes Ms. Han for a presentation.
Mr. President, distinguished colleagues, I am here this morning to pay tribute to two outstanding community leaders that I've invited here this morning, Ms. Shirley Tomich and Mr. James Cross. Tonight is the 96th Annual Installation Dinner for the San Pedro Peninsula Chamber of Commerce, and the chamber has enjoyed a truly spectacular year, and these two people have played an important role in our community in that area. And I would first like to recognize Shirley. And during her term as president of the chamber's auxiliary, Shirley has exemplified the spirit of service and continued the auxiliary's long tradition of service to the chamber and to our community. From the auxiliary's regular assistance with a wide range of chamber's special events and programs, to the fundraising efforts that have helped the youth in our community, the auxiliary has continually demonstrated a willingness to pitch in— a willingness to pitch in wherever they are needed. And I know that the chamber could not function without their indispensable contribution. So Shirley, on behalf of a grateful community of San Pedro and a proud city of Los Angeles, I am pleased to present you with this certificate of recognition in honor of your dedicated leadership of the San Pedro Chamber of Commerce Auxiliary. Congratulations on a great year.
The great city of Los Angeles has many, many treasures, but the port and the harbor and the San Pedro community area is among some of the sparkling ones. We want to invite you all to come down and see what's going on and enjoy part of your treasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I would also like to recognize Mr. James Cross, who tonight will step down as the president of the San Pedro Chamber of Commerce. As I mentioned, this has been an exciting year in San Pedro, and the chamber has been right at the heart of our community's progress. From their advocacy on issues relating to the port of Los Angeles, to their efforts to rejuvenate the historic Warner Grand Theater as a cultural icon of our community, the chamber has shown great awareness of the issues most important to San Pedro's development. And branching out what some would call their traditional role, our chamber has also launched an initiative to place a new charter high school in downtown San Pedro. The new school would house as many as 2,000 students and would provide international, trade-related job skills backed by a traditional academic curriculum. Truly, this is a chamber of commerce that focuses on the breadth of issues affecting San Pedro and applies its energy accordingly. Jim, I am proud to present you with the certificate of recognition this morning in honor of your dynamic leadership and creative leadership of our Chamber of Commerce. Congratulations on a very successful year. We wish there wasn't term limits.
Councilwoman Han, thank you. It was an honor to serve the business community of San Pedro and the broader community. I look forward to finding new ways to work within the community and support it, and it's certainly a pleasure and humbling experience to receive an award on a day when people are retiring after 30 years of service in this fine, new, rededicated hall. So thank you very much, and appreciate the honor.
Councilmember Han, Councilmember Han, this was your first presentation, and you did a tremendous job. You're a natural. And another member with his first presentation, the chair recognizes Mr. Reyes. For a presentation.
Council President, members of the council, I'd like to take a moment to make a quick introduction. With us today, we have Councilman Rodrigo Contreras Teos. He is a council member of the 4th District of San Salvador. This is Councilmember Teos' first visit to Los Angeles. He has been here for two days and has been doing preparation work for the arrival of the mayor of San Salvador, Dr. Hector Silva, who will be arriving here tomorrow. As many of you may not know, currently, Los Angeles has the largest population of Salvadorans in the world outside of El Salvador. I would like to welcome the council member to our chambers. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. You do, Mr. President. Please call the roll. Burnson, Galanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Wax, Weiss, Zein, and Padilla. Eleven members present in a quorum, Mr. President. Let's get to work. First order of business is approval of minutes. Ms. Miskowski moves. Ms. Galanter seconds. Commendatory resolutions for approval. Ms. Perry moves. Mr. Weiss seconds. Before starting the regular agenda, item number eight on the continuation agenda is an item that has been requested to be continued by the applicant in Council District 11 until July 20. Without objection, that item is continued. Excuse me, if I said July 11, I meant July 20. Item number one on the regular agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held. There are two reports on this file. A motion is required from the floor, and the reports have been circulated. Members, item number one is before us. There are two reports, one from the Budget and Finance Committee, one from governmental efficiency. Is there a motion? Mr. Weiss.
Reports, Mr. President.
Mr. Weiss moves the Budget and Finance report. Any other members wishing to speak? If not, clerk, please open the roll on the motion. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please. Mr. President, items number two through five on the regular agenda are items which public hearings have not been held. Item number two, a motion is required from the floor inasmuch as there's two reports on one file. And we have a card on item number four. Let's call that item special. Any members of the public wishing to speak on items two through five? Seeing no additional items, members, items two, three, and five are before us.
Mr. President, I would just like to amend item two to add that the report that comes back on the emergency medical services insurance claims be referred to Budget and Finance Committee. That's item three of number two.
Of item number two.
Right.
And as the clerk mentioned, there are two reports on file. Did you wish to move one of the reports?
I will move the Budget and Finance Committee report.
Okay. Any other members wishing to speak on items two, three, or five? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll on item two with the motion, and three and five as well. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please. Item number four is called special. A member of the public wishes to speak. The council calls forward Mr. Larry Green for comment on item number four.
Good morning, members of the council. And Mr. President, I was in my office Wednesday, and I heard, as we say in the vernacular, my shout-out from you. You said, "Where's Melrose Larry Green when you need him?" Well, I was absent gathering signatures, which alas have passed the test of mustard. But that's where I was Wednesday. Item number four, it's Budget and Finance Committee report and Communication from Chair, Public Safety Committee, relative to the Police Department's status reports on sworn hiring. Well, we had 87 years of experience retiring this morning. It's a major problem recruiting LAPD, and it's an even bigger problem getting LAPD to live in the city of LA. We have only 10% of the force living in the city of LA, correct? 20%? I thought it was 10. The Daily News was wrong. Okay. Anyway, I support item number four.
Thank you very much. That closes the public hearing on item number four. Members, item number four is before us. Any members wishing to speak? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll on item number four. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. That item is approved. Ms. Miskowski.
I would like to ask the council to reconsider item number seven from Wednesday's agenda. It was a code enforcement appeal affecting a piece of property in the 11th District. And although it was on the agenda for Wednesday, the notice that the city's code enforcement is sent out informed the owner that the hearing was going to be on July 18. So we acted on it inadvertently with a letter, so the property owner did not have noticed. So I would like to ask the council to reconsider item number seven from Wednesday's agenda and continue it to August 1. Set the assessment notice hearing to August 1.
Okay. Members, there's a motion to reconsider item number seven from Wednesday's agenda. Clerk, please open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That item is now reconsidered, and without objection, shall be continued until the date requested by Councilmember Miskowski. August 1. Next item, please. Mr. President, items number six and seven are closed session items. Do you wish to hold those on the desk? Let's hold those on the desk and proceed to public comment. This is the point in time of the meeting where we receive comments from the public on items not appearing on today's agenda. I'd like to call forward Mr. Larry Green, to be followed by Candido Maris.
Good morning. I will be very respectful of the other speakers and public comments, as I know that only 10 minutes is allotted for public comment. But I will take a couple of minutes to, first of all, congratulations to President Padilla on that great story in the New York Times about you. Many of my relatives who read it in Brooklyn were thrilled, and in the words of, I actually have an auntie in Brooklyn, "He'll be a great catch." He's a great catch. So we don't know if you're married or not, but congratulations to all of my former New York brethren before I moved to LA on the presidency. All of my friends in New York congratulate you, President Padilla. I also want to say that in the last week, I became too familiar with Councilman Holden's district, and Councilman Weiss's district, and Councilman Garcetti's district, since you border on the 4th, the 10th, the 5th, and the 13th. And the problems of the 4th district are the same as the problems of the 10th, the 5th, the 13th, and all the others. And I want to say that it's great to be here this morning and not to be getting signatures like some of my rivals in the 4th district. I do want to say, though, on a more serious note, today's Daily News has an op-ed piece which is very painful to read, and I'm going to just briefly summarize it. It's talking about the events in Washington, DC with the intern, Chandra Levy. And I want to quote from this article. "Perhaps what we really need is a new feminism." This is by Mona Charen. "It won't be based on killing the unborn, or putting women in combat, or promoting a liberal agenda, but it will focus on something that liberal feminism has failed to do: instill a sense of dignity, honor, and self-respect in young women. A sense of morality would be nice, too, though we can't push our luck. But at the very least, a young woman should know her own worth. She should not let anyone, not even a congressman or president, treat her like a concubine." This is an article in today's Daily News talking about, quite frankly, something you probably don't want to discuss, 50-year-old men, 53-year-old men, having affairs with 24-year-old interns. I am calling on the LA City Council to make a pledge and a proclamation saying that no one on the council will ever tolerate having affairs with interns half their age. I'm shocked that nobody in Congress is saying anything about this, or the state legislature. But maybe you will have the chutzpah or the morality with a new president, and I might add, a very moral president, to do this. That's all my comments. I will now reserve the rest of my public comments to the other speakers. I'm Larry Green. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Maris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I promise you, I will not become a regular speaker here, but when I read and hear things about people that I really care about, such as Mr. Hernandez and Mr. Savornic, it bothers me. Mr. Holden, you did a fine thing by hiring these two individuals. Will the city of Los Angeles get their money's worth? Absolutely. Do these two gentlemen know what they're talking about in these two items? Traffic congestion and housing? Those are probably two of the biggest issues we'll be dealing with in the future. So it was a great move. But I think these two gentlemen deserve more respect. I should have said, "We hired them because they had ability, not because they needed a handout." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. That concludes the public comment period. Clerk, next item, please. Before your items number six and seven, which are closed session items, do you wish to do housekeeping at this time? Let's do housekeeping. Motion for posting and referral. Those motions are posted and referred. Councilmember's request for excuse from council attendance. Councilmember Galanter requests to be excused on October 9 for city business, and October 10, 12, 16, 17, and 19 for vacation. This meets policy. Ms. Galanter is excused. Yeah. Item number, excuse me, President Padilla requests to be excused on Friday, October 12 for city business. This meets policy. Mr. Holden says Mr. Padilla is excused. Mr. Pacheco requests to be excused on Friday, August 17 for personal business. This also meets policy. Mr. Pacheco is excused. And Councilmember Zein requests to be excused on Wednesday, August 8, to leave at 11:00 a.m. for city business. This also meets policy. For Mr. Zein, there is no excuse. His excuse. Mr. President, the desk is clear except for items number six and seven, which are closed session items. Items number six and seven are closed session items in conformance with California Code. The council will now recess into closed session, and we ask that the chambers be cleared. Sergeants? Welcome back into open session. Clerk, next item on the agenda. The desk is clear. The desk is clear. This is the conclusion of the agenda. Colleagues, any adjourning motions? Any adjourning motions? Members, please rise. Chair recognizes Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm asking us to adjourn today in the honor of Mr. Omero Tamburi, who passed away on July 7 following a long illness. Mr. Tamburi was born in Vermont in 1915, but was a longtime resident of the Peninsula area. A hard-working family man, Mr. Tamburi is survived by his wife, Elia, his sons Mario and Terry, and his daughter, Connie McCosker, who is the wife of Tim McCosker, the chief of staff to Mayor Jim Hahn. And he also has five grandchildren. Mr. President, members, I ask you to join me in recognizing the memory of Mr. Omero Tamburi.
All members. Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, there's a sad note here also. Philip Roden. Mr. Roden passed away July 8. Longtime employee of the Los Angeles Sentinel Advertising Department. He worked there when Colonel Washington was the owner and publisher many, many years ago, and I met him at that time. Not only was he active in the community, but he was always there and available for community causes. So he's going to be certainly sorely missed. Funeral services are set for tomorrow at 2:00 p.m. at Angela's Funeral Home, 3869 Quincha Boulevard. He's survived by his wife, Johnny Louise Roden, daughter Philip Benton, son Willie Harris, and a number of others, many other relatives and friends. So in his honor, in his memory.
Thank you. Any others? Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. We'll see you on Tuesday.